Weekly workshop. Madam clerk, full call please.
Mr. Councilor Mesa.
Here.
Mr. Malloy.
Here.
Ms. Franchco.
Commissioner, we're going to start if we could with the Board of Elections.
Yes.
They've got other business to get to today.
Sure.
I was there yesterday touring the facility and get some stuff for us, so.
It was great.
These format here as we always have, when you speak, say your name and where you're from first, at least in the first time you identify yourself.
Edgar McCavige, Deputy Director, Trumbull County Board of Elections.
Stephanie Penrose, Director, Board of Elections.
So we want to come and once again, we were back, I think in November, and we were talking about the state was bringing out a grant that we are going to get all new poll books. And it's going to happen, they extended the grant, so it'll be next year, but right after this election. And I'm going to let Steph talk about it because she was.
Okay, we did met with three different companies for the poll books, narrowed it down pretty narrow to one that we think is most beneficial to the voters and poll workers of Trumbull County. The company is called No Ink. We did get our board's approval to present this to you. We've any of that commissioners in that green folder is the quote, don't go to the very end, go to the very top of the second page is the year one price. Now, that is, we will have to pay that in full, but then we will get $128,000 of that back from the state grant. You'll see a paper in there that tells you our allocation, 128 and change. This will eventually save money on the current setup that we have to do. We have to pay about over $5,000 per election to set up our poll book. That will be done in-house now. We have forms that we have to print, those will come off of the poll book now. Daily data updates for early voters that we pay a daily rate for will come off of the poll, all be done in-house now. And the yearly rate, which you'll see for the subsequent year two and three, really is basically the same rate we're paying right now for our current poll books. That are at pretty much end of life. They've been in place since 2019. This is something we have discussed with the auditor's office, so Christie could tell you probably where the money, where they're thinking.
And this was addressed also at the November budget for 2024, just an FII. They did inform everyone at that point.
We've been trying to keep.
This was on the horizon. And we did talk to them last week, I believe, about essentially the non-grant portion coming from. Sales tax, thank you. Oh my gosh, I was trying not to say property tax. Sales tax, thank you.
Do you have any, I don't know if you have any questions for us? We'd like permission to put this on the agenda in October after data board.
Yeah, be approved by the data board first.
So we're eligible above the 85% of the cost.
Yes, which the hun- the full 128,000 is more than 80, I mean, is less than 85, so we can use the full 128,000.
Okay.
We do have to pay first upfront and then the vendor told me he's heard that people are getting checks anywhere from a week to 10 days.
It's a reimbursable grant.
Okay.
Right, yes.
Yeah.
And we don't have to put the money, you don't have to open a fund or anything.
Got you.
Goes back into the general fund.
Yeah, I don't have an issue with it.
So we, I'd like to send the contract to the prosecutor's office for review.
And I do see on this map here, No Ink is used by almost all the counties that touch us.
In Ohio.
Right.
And we actually have visited some counties to see how they, if they like the product, how they feel coming from the same vendor to, that we have currently, to the new vendor. We had even a focus group of poll workers for two of the vendors and nobody had a bad word to say about these poll books.
We had a rating scale and every single one of them outrated No Ink over the current one.
Who was, who did the rankings or who, just the two?
Stephanie and I did.
Yes.
But the, I mean, the poll workers that through a demonstration.
I get you.
Hands-on and then rated everything.
Okay.
On both companies.
On two companies.
Very good, very good.
Two of the three companies we visited.
Right.
I have no issue with it.
I'm good.
Well, we thank.
Send it over, yeah.
Both of you for your support.
Do you have one more thing in the packet there? You gave yours a little bit.
I did. The other, the only other thing we wanted to go over is we have never was, had a plaque for our remodeling and everything that was approved, our lighting, everything up in front, and we want to be able to do that and have a rededication of the building.
True.
I think, yeah, I saw the building was built in 74 and had a remodel in 2007, there's a plaque out there. There should be one for 2024 also. It was the modern rededication, so I think we should do that, get the plaque, and then actual, you know, do some form of a thing. I don't know, we probably couldn't get it before November, but sometime around election, it could be tied in with election awareness somehow.
Well, we're going to work on that and try to get that done with your approval.
Okay.
Yes, I'm good with it. You're good, Mark?
Good.
Before you guys leave, we do have a money transfer on the agenda for this week. It's a combination between the Board of Elections increased cost and the court, of course, and I don't know if maybe you guys need to touch on that, but while you're here. For the Board of Elections side, there's additional postage being requested because of the national change of address cars needing to be sent out, supplemental for people who have not voted since 2022, and then also a cost of sending the ballot because there might be an increased weight in the ballot.
Yes, we are exactly at two ounces on our ballot, which is 97 cents. If anything happens that adds even a half sheet of paper, it will go to a dollar 25. We have to be prepared to mail minimum 40,000 ballots. That's $50,000 right there, not including any other mailing, anything from our office.
Okay.
So we are requesting money, additional monies for, to be prepared because it does take a few weeks to get postage paid.
So it's like a 28 cent difference?
Yes.
Mark, can we take a few letters out of your last name?
Unfortunately, it's a two-page.
Did you do with a couple less vowels?
Yeah. It's a two-page, two-page longest ballot you can get because of issue one. So it's, and plus instructions and whatnot.
Yeah, those three postage issues that came up, and then also it needed to add for temporary service for BCI checks for temporary workers. So that's part of that money transfer request from the sales tax.
Okay.
Hopefully it sticks within that level and there's nothing else added or any other last minute things with Secretary of State or some of the mandates we throw in there.
Hopefully.
Thank you.
Okay, ladies, is that everything?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you so much.
And the place looks great, too. I got to tour the Board of Elections yesterday and what a change, nice, customer-friendly.
Oh, yes.
Thank you.
Hi.
Okay, we also have some other guests, you want to take care of that now?
Sure.
Yeah, if you could. Mr. Off the Valley, come on up.
Well, Gary won't be here for another 20 minutes.
I'll give you what I got, and then you guys can figure it out.
There you go.
Michael Horn Hall.
Yeah, we get the public ones.
So this meeting, this showing up in the fall to the.
Name for the record, sorry.
Following up on the meeting Thursday, I thought went very well. Part of what we brought up at that meeting was scope for that project being reduced due to cost. I respect that. Came here today to see if there was a question around the possibility of finding that $85,000 difference Gary mentioned, be able to continue the project in its original scope. That original scope was down the road of Anderson. The residents on that stretch of road did in fact sign the efficient water and then were removed from that notification due to shrink. I understand the engineers office did a great job, they're doing a great job. I'm here to advocate for the extension of that water line to properly facilitate the whole project. Because there's at least a chance to go to a public hearing with the knowledge and investment from the ARP or whatever funds the county might be able to do to offset that cost for their water line. We indirectly have frontage on that road, but also on Stillwagon. We're paying a substantial amount for assessment if we do vote for that, but notice due by Friday. So we are contributing large financial investment with no immediate benefit. I think in my dialogue last week, I kind of laid that out. Results of dialogue back to me, kind of putting the onus on us to fill the gap, although that's the right solution, but I'm not opposed to working on finding a solution, bring that the gap down. We need some kind of level of commitment. Kind of commissioners, Gary's not all he can do and his office is not all they can do. Finding those funds gets to a public hearing or some kind of commitment from the leadership to get to that.
So I think originally the scope of the project did include Anderson.
Yes.
And originally, if I'm not mistaken, engineering cost, the cost to extend that line down there was about 150,000 estimated. We've gotten some firmer numbers since then, I think, it's come down to 85,000. I think that you probably asked Gary that at the public hearing and that's the number we're hearing after it's re-engineered. Obviously, we have some individuals that live along there that have been waiting on water, just like the people on Stillwagon. I see one of them here today, I know that.
How many houses are on Anderson now that are reserved?
Well, there are, I don't have it in front of me, but if you don't mind.
Yeah.
I believe there is going to be in that leg about six homes.
Going to be, or there is now?
There's, no, I mean, there's existing six, six parcels. Twenty-six along Stillwagon, this leg was going to add another six residents. There are some vacant lots within there and so forth. Again, our residents there, they're experiencing the same need for water and property owner and residents deserve a chance to at least take it to a public hearing, but we need that commitment from your office, first strings, make commitment to fill the gaps, see how the public hearing goes. If it goes down to a public hearing, then so be it, the public people's vote, but not have that chance, and I don't think is right. Our benefit, of course, is getting water to that frontage we own, and I've been in constant communication with some of the residents for the last five years. This is not new, we've been working on this for many years. Patient, I've worked with the townships, the counties, the cities, everybody involved, and we're to a point now where right thing to do, I think, is try to put our heads together, get the project to come together for everybody.
So, and I think it's important to remember that it did include Anderson in the original scope, and because of cost, we took it out. Now, that cost has since changed from approximately 150 to 85, so it's been cut in half. I'm willing to use dollars to extend that line. I know there's some development that could come from that as well. I know there's residents, and one of them's here today, that have been waiting just as patiently as the people on Stillwagon. We're going to do the project, we should probably do the original scope of the project, so that's going to take more ARP.
How many more lots or houses can you anticipate would be serviced by that?
Well, again, what's existing there, there'd be, I think, six more homes to complete that leg.
Six more?
Well, again, existing homes, people living on that street, that's basically.
Right, no, but I'm talking about what's the future potential with that stretch of road there.
So again, big, big picture, and this isn't about me, it's about we, right?
Right, we need housing in the county, that's what I'm saying.
So maybe the big, big picture is if it does come together, you're talking about lining up a water line, a sewer project, you know, being discussed, that can contain 250 homes. I mean, it's a substantial, you know, investment long-term.
I would just, I would say this, I would hate to walk away from this project because I don't know whether you're going to vote on your existing property on Stillwagon, sounds like you're not in favor of it, and if we don't get those in favor of it, we're going to have to scratch the project, the entire project. I'd hate to walk away from it for 85,000.
That's my thing. No, we are in favor of it, but we're in, we were in favor of the original scope. Again, things happen, we adjust, we change, we try to work it out, but I think now is the time to put our hands together.
Let me ask you something, are you willing to assist with that cost?
I'm willing to have a discussion. I mean, I'm, you're asking me to pay twice more than everyone else, so I'm willing to look at that.
But you're also asking the county to extend the Anderson, so if there's a way we can work together on this.
I'm happy to do that.
Do we have to, we'll have to have another whole public hearing just to that stretch?
Well.
Which is going to take another couple of months?
Yeah, just have, you know, so to know we have some level of commitment from the commissioners to say, yes, we will allocate funds to that, it makes me feel good knowing that if I'm in support of that project, we know there's a future to getting it done correctly. And these residents that live over there know there's an opportunity to voice their opinion. If they shoot it down, okay, they can get that.
I mean, with the potential, with, I mean, all signs pointing towards having a housing shortage in this county and us needing to prepare the way for Kimberly-Clark and other companies that are coming here for next year, if I grant to have the potential, service 250 more people down the road, doing it now while the workers are out there, while they're getting it done, I'd have to say personally myself, I think it's a good investment of dollars to do that.
I agree.
I mean, it's a gateway to the future development, it's not a solution. I mean, it is six houses now, people could think, oh, it's 85 grand for only six houses, but the potential of it being the gateway to more, which we would need to service those people down the road, you know, I'd be in favor of exploring possibilities now, striking all the iron's on, I guess.
And I, and I agree.
I'm talking about Jerry as far as the plans and what we, you know, is there much ease in doing the project now rather than restarting a whole new project later down the road, you know? I think it's something we should definitely.
Entertain.
Entertain.
When you're talking the type of housing, you're talking like a Klein's Farm development that you've already, I mean, in that.
If you had, yes, if you had to find something very similar, I would compare it to that.
And that's the type of housing that the Chamber and all our economic development partners have said is lacking kind of in the area, so.
I've been in all those calls and meetings and everything's been leaning toward that. We, you know, I think I mentioned to you, we got some money from the state through the one-time street fund.
Yeah.
To help facilitate faster growth in the housing on a couple other projects. We got a lot of things cooking, but this is about planning up, most importantly, it's about giving them water.
Yes.
And then allowing us to plan for the future.
And the people on Stillwagon who've been waiting very patiently.
Again, I'm not here, I'm here for me, but I'm here for wait, if that makes any sense? Like, I'm here because we're going to benefit at some point. The immediate need is the people, and I'm willing to help out more than what.
No, I get it.
Do we know where we are with the vote for the Stillwagon project?
Lisa, we've had some come in, have we not?
Four. Beyond that meeting.
Beyond that meeting, four that have submitted.
Came through the mail, certified now.
That did not want it.
No.
Okay, all right, so that shot down anyways, this is the moot point, but if that goes through and they want it, I say we move forward as best we can to look at what the next step is to making that possible.
What did that look like?
I guess, that's a good question, because we would need to work together on something like this, I think. The county shouldn't bear this entire burden, so maybe, though I know this, you're not going to give legal advice here, but is there a way to have like sort of a public-private partnership for this and to him contribute and the county contribute? And, I mean, that's something we can discuss, you don't have to answer it now, but I just think, I know we both share the burden in this, and you're going to see tremendous development out of it. We're going to be able to provide water to a lot of people that we normally wouldn't be able to. It's a win-win, but maybe we both have to have skin in the game, you know?
I've never been opposed to work with everybody, I just want to make sure that we're all in it together. I can't fund the whole gap.
I understand, I understand.
But my question has come tomorrow, is there such an animal as a, I don't know how you guys operate, you make a motion or?
Well, is there, is there something, is there something, Commissioner, they're going to be Niles water customers?
Yes.
Would Niles have skin in the game if they're going to sell potentially to 250 more customers? Wouldn't Niles want it and maybe want to participate somehow in the partnership?
Potentially, yeah.
I mean, it's worth an ask.
Yeah, absolutely.
Even if Niles came into the day, we'll pay half that 85 grand, but they're going to get.
Right.
250 customers potentially down the road, it's a good investment for them, too.
I don't disagree, I just don't want to bait the cake before we've already agreed.
I understand.
Like, we need to kind of know the commitments there that we can support the current public hearing and then move forward to those conversations.
So I guess we don't have numbers just quite yet, but I mean, that's something that can be negotiated.
I mean, we don't, we don't need to have Mexican standoff here. If it's like, if you can vote to put the first one through, we're not going to turn around stiffy on the other one, or we're not going to be held, well, I won't vote for this one unless you vote for this one either, we can't play that game.
I've only been around 25 years, I've only been around, things change, you know, I mean, I want, you know, it's, it's a challenging situation for everybody, I want to.
We're going to do it, we're going to do it because it's right.
Right.
It's right for this lady, it's right for future development, you know, that, that's the reason we want to do it.
And I guess that's how it looks right now without talking to legal counsel, that's what we can give you right now, I guess.
There's nothing you can put on the record to say you would move forward and fill the gap.
Well, we can't, we don't, without Martha being here, we don't have the funding, we can't go into our part, the portals closed. It's something we have to figure out a way of how to pay for it next.
You know, we're digesting this right now, so let's, you know.
But I'm giving, I'm giving the commitment myself personally, if I like the idea then, I think that's the right thing. So, I mean, that's the best I can do without looking at numbers and looking at budgets, but we should, or if not, we're going to be back, hopefully, in a year or two or whenever the project moves forward that ways of trying to do it all over again.
Right.
Which, which I think now is when we need to lay the foundation for housing.
Right.
Even with Valley Vision 20, 2050, housing is one of the top three things that we're looking at with the Lake River and with the Chambers, so I mean, this is something that's got to be, if they're telling us that, we have to listen as.
Absolutely.
Public servants, that that's what we need in the community, it's our job to lay the infrastructure, his job to build the houses and the community's job to provide the jobs to get the people here.
I don't know if I'm allowed to say anything, but.
Yeah, we need to name first, so you can speak all you want.
Susan Arnold.
You're the most important.
No, no, that's okay. What I, what you might need to know, because you said Niles and this, is water line is Niles, but ends, Niles definitely should be involved. Randy did not understand that the line, he thought it ended at Stillwagon, does not. Stillwagon, that's in Anderson Morris. Water line actually ends in.
I don't know if that's picking up.
Anderson Morris, and I explained that to him, I don't know.
That's not picking up on the microphone, we need to have public record of this, I'm sorry.
I'm sorry. The water line does not end at Stillwagon. So at first he ended the project at Stillwagon, and I said to him, the water line does not end at Stillwagon, it ends around the corner at Anderson Morris. So he changed it and included on Anderson Morris. And then when all of a sudden this meeting came up, I didn't even know about it because I'm on Anderson Morris and never had a letter, I didn't know we were even committed from the project. So, and that was because of funding, I found out. And that was okay, but it would have been nice to know that all of a sudden we're not part of the project, but the line that ends is Niles water line. So it would be a benefit, I mean, to involve them because it's their water line.
There is a compromise there somewhere, I mean.
Oh, yeah.
We need, we should be extending water to as many people as we can, they're doing a job force of providing housing that we need for workers to have an economic impact in the county. So it's, there's a fit here with it, it's just putting the right pieces of the puzzle in the right place without forcing them.
I guess the timing is what we, I suppose.
Agreed.
We will, I'll leave this meeting, take everything we talked about, advise it, put the cast or votes by Friday on the current public hearing. Understand that we have the understanding to work together in a timely manner, like.
Well, I think, I think now if they're going to do the project, it just makes sense we're going to do it all at once and not have to come back and do it.
Probably has to go another public hearing.
It does.
Three months. Again, timing all that up would be very. Probably has to go another public hearing, it takes three months, so again, timing all that up would be very, that's your end.
But that's, that's something that we'd have to do regardless.
I just, I just wouldn't want it to take another year or two.
No, no, no.
And you lose all your.
I, I think, I think, obviously, we're gonna find out in the next, in the coming days, uh, the response here, and, and from what I understand, the responses hasn't been as favorable, unfortunately, uh, and then, obviously, your response ties into that on Stillwagon, too, so, um, the county, what I don't wanna have happen is we walk away from this project and, and leave Stillwagon and Anderson without water for eighty-five thousand dollars, but, and that's what it's coming down to.
One thing to keep in mind, we have water. We are, so we're supporting something that we don't really have a need for at this moment, it's the other end of the property.
No, I get it, as, as do some other people, you're right.
We are, we are hoping out beyond.
And I understand that.
Okay, we appreciate your suggestion, and, uh.
I, I just wanna say, the ones that are right back negative, I've spoken to, I was the one who went down the street with a petition. I've, I've been doing this for thirty years, so, uh, I know all the people on the street, if they're signing because it's negative, it's because they just, they can't afford it. They're earning a fixed income, they're working a hillside, they're worried about their job, they just don't have money for it, it's not that they don't want it, every one of them do. Uh, Niles put in wells, it's fracked, our, our well, our water's not good, and they know it, but they're drinking that water anyway, they have no choice, or they're drinking bottled water. But, um, they want it, they just can't afford right now that cost, so that's the negativity, otherwise, they need to know they all want water.
Well, we, you gotta say, for water projects, and, and Bob can speak to this more than me, but we've been through this a few times. I mean, if you're over fifty, fifty dollars a square foot, you're, you're, you're not gonna, that's probably not gonna pass. So that's where the, it came in, that we had to pare down this project because of that. Now, the original estimate was one fifty, and I was scratching my head saying, that's probably not doable, but eighty-five is more doable, in my opinion. And, and especially when you talk about all the development that, that comes with that, so I think that, um, that's something that commissioners can revisit, and, um, I don't wanna use that, you know, typically, when these projects don't go, and I don't know if they're not, it's gonna go or not, I don't know, we haven't gotten all the responses. But if it doesn't go, I don't, I don't wanna use that money for other purposes, I'd like to keep it in this project, and then, if need be, add to it to, to add yourself and, and, uh, development along that corridor, so.
We've just been asking for so long, we thought when the funding came through, you know, we'd finally get water and.
And, and the cost of doing business for us has, has increased immensely, as, as it has for everybody, unfortunately, with inflationary costs.
It's safe to not give back the money, I understand that.
Yes, so, we, we appreciate it.
But thank you for working with us.
Good, thank you guys for your time.
All right, thank you for your time.
Thanks for your meeting.
Take care.
Okay, thank you, fine enough, thank you.
Well, I guess we'll talk to this area a little bit, maybe it's worth the meeting.
Yeah, we, we, we gotta consult Gary.
Get some of his thoughts, too, but.
I mean.
To open the access to the potential of that many homes, um, we absolutely have to.
And, and not just that, if, if, if the project doesn't go, all the, all those people on Stillwagon won't have water, and that's the issue. And if, and if he can vote yes on it, makes it a whole lot easier, 'cause he has so much front footage, make the project a, a go, basically.
Very good. So I guess it is a stand-up in a sense, if he votes yes.
It kinda is, it kinda is.
You know, he's a good neighbor, if he votes no, he's not a good neighbor, and we probably wouldn't wanna.
It's kinda is, you know.
Okay.
But we wanna just provide the water, you know.
Okay, um, anyone else need to go to the front?
See, Mr. Allen is here, he wants to, no?
Wait, he will.
Okay, okay.
Okay, okay, let's, uh, get on with it, then. Hey, dispense with the minutes, approve the bills, transfer money auditor.
Christie's Auditor's Office, uh, we have one transfer of money, we addressed part of that with the Board of Elections, uh, at the beginning of the meeting, uh, the second part of that is the Clerk of Courts is also requesting additional postage, and this is due to, um, their excess funds notices, uh, they were just sending them out for their postage, but they're now required to send them certified mail, which is an increase in cost. So that is included with the Board of Elections estimates on their, their totals, so that's our request for the transfer of money. Uh, the next one we have is the, approve the additional appropriations, and we have the Board of Elections, uh, this is, would be their share of the increase, twenty-two thousand dollars to increase postage and temporary services due to this new requirement. The Clerk of Courts estimate is thirty thousand to increase postage, um, comment please, um, uh, twenty thousand dollars to increase social services account, domestic relations in juvenile court, and that's, uh, due to the Microsoft three sixty-five licenses, and the Sheriff's Office, um, is an adjustment done to reconcile their adult probation allocation through the Sheriff's Office.
Okay, approved transfer appropriations.
That is, uh, Board of Developmental Disabilities, they're covering ongoing minor repairs and maintenance to buildings. Board of Health, it's needed in their building grounds and maintenance account, also the Board of Health, uh, they have a request to fix budget, an over-budget issue. The Coroner's Office, uh, that is for a temporary electric hookup to the morgue. Emergency Management is to fund a new account within that, um, fund. Uh, Jobs and Family Services, this is state examiner's invoice exceeded the projected amount. Maintenance, uh, we're fixing various over-budget accounts. Uh, Planning Commission has three, the first one is for training and seminars, the second one's for advertisement, and the third one is for office supplies. Then the Prosecutor's Office, um, is reconciling or adjusting their victim witness account, and the Sanitary Engineers Office has two. The first one is for additional sewer system funds, and the second one is additional funds for excavating. Any questions?
All right. Six, concur that Beggars Dublucar Attorneys at Law, they undertake concurrent representation of Vernon Township and the Commissioners, and the road improvement contractual matters, and thus waive any objection to complacency ventures to respect such concurrent representation and execute this waiver. And that'll be for the, uh, ARPA project.
And we've received emails from Jason Toth back and forth.
Yes.
Yeah.
Uh, next, based on the substance, Chelmo County Assistant Prosecutor Attorney Jason Toth, September ninth, letter to the Chelmo County Board of Commissioners, the Board of Commissioners gives its informed consent, Chelmo County Prosecutor's Office, Cleveland Toth, he represents multiple clients between Chelmo County Board of Commissioners, Chelmo County Engineer, in review of, uh, agreement to penetrate patching and chip ceiling in Vernon Township roads drafted by Tanya Rogers, uh, any reason why we have to have this twice?
Uh, Bill Tanto, County Prosecutor's Office, uh, the reason it's on here twice is, Commissioners, the first one is, uh, for you guys to consider waiving a conflict uh, between Tanya Rogers, uh, and then the second one is waiving a conflict relative to our office.
Gotcha.
Uh, because both Tanya Rogers and our office represents multiple parties here. Um, we don't believe there's any reason you can't waive the conflict here, because we think everybody's interests are all to get this project done. So if you agree, you would just be in a position then to adopt these, both of these.
Do you like the wording on number seven, the way it starts, based on the substance?
It's, I have no problem with it that way, and that's, in fact, I believe that's the way the last one was on there for, uh, the first township we did this for, so I think now we're just kinda reusing the same language.
Okay, just seems in my ear something.
Sure.
I'm a stickler with grammar sometimes, and it's, uh, just sounds weird. Um, all right, approve, personal action for ordering Mr. Dimitri Layotes from his current position of Administrative Assistant, they range four, nineteen eighty-eight, the position of Workforce Development Board Administrator. They range ten, effective Monday, September twenty-third, uh, per HR, um, he's been with us since twenty eighteen. Uh, he conducted interviews, ranked the people, he, he scored, um, the best with it, and you've reached out, and he is in favor of accepting the position they've offered, right?
Yeah. Uh, Commissioners, I'll introduce you to Nancy Bush, um, I sent everything to you last week, um, which you all reviewed and decided to go forth with my suggestion. Um, it's abundantly clear, uh, that this gentleman has all of the, uh, knowledge, skills, abilities to do this job compared to everybody else, uh, that applied. Um, we did take the time to right-size this job, and that's very important, um, what we did was, we took it from a director to an administrator. It'll be an administrator, he's still a department head, he still reports to the Board of Commissioners, um, but it is that way because he's not directing anybody in this role. We felt like, after looking at other comparable workforce development boards in areas, especially with Area eighteen only being one county, okay? Most workforce development boards have multiple counties within their area, this is a one-county, one-entity, um, so therefore, what we're doing is
What do you want, though?
Uh, by eliminating Dimitri's position and promoting, giving him the promotion, which is duly, you know, he's earned it this. Um, we will no longer have an assistant reporting to Dimitri, so we are also saving, um, some money along the way, which is ideal. Also, we looked at right-sizing the appropriate salary range for this position. Obviously, if you're not a director, and you're not directing anybody, and you're kind of a one-person shop, we needed to relook at that. Also, we looked at other areas, other regions, I provided you guys with all that information, and, and I really feel like that this was a, this is a good move in the right direction of where we're headed for the county, and just making sure we're right sizing jobs as attrition happens, as people get let go or retire, or whatever the facts may be.
And it's gonna save us a total of excess forty grand a year, plus, like, uh, eliminating the one component.
I, I didn't bring my actual dollar amount, so I apologize, I'm ready with everything else but that, so I can't tell you the exact dollar amount, um, but, you know, as always, that's, that's our goal, right, is, is to relook at things when people retire or leave.
Streamline government, I love it.
And that's what we did, so.
Okay, you good with that? He's well-deserving of it.
Oh, yeah, of course, of course.
This is the first day I got here, I mean, he carries himself as an administrator or director anyway, the way he dresses, the way he presents himself in public, the way he conducts himself in a meeting, he's well-deserving of this.
But I will say, just to, uh, his, his skill set meets everything that we need for this position, so it's, you know, um, it's not easy always to train, to come from a private entity and understand public procurement, and understand all the things that go into public jobs, and he, again, footed the bill for all that, so.
Right. Number nine, approve the personal action for deployment of Ms. Megan Gregory as unit support worker with Chelmo County Department of Job and Family Services. She'll be paid sixteen fifty-eight an hour and serve nine-month probationary period.
Yes, Commissioner John Gargian, Old Chelmo County JFS, uh, this is an entry-level position, uh, it would've been on last week with the others that we hired. Unfortunately, we didn't have all the documentation back for her, uh, and she will be starting, again, as an entry-level position in the front desk area.
Number ten, accept maintenance bond issued by Western Surety Company for the Chelmo County Planning Commission Roof Replacement Project. Funded through Chelmo County's local government fiscal recovery, American Rescue Plan Funds, completed by Bowken Sons, Inc. Contract was awarded to Bowken Sons in twenty twenty-three is complete, and final payment is being requested. Work is approved by the project manager David Roos, Stroll, Arctic City Warren also approved project based on the twenty-year car loan warranty issued for this project. The bond, the work completed in the amount of ten percent of the final project cost, is valid for a period of two years, is required by the contract documents commencing May thirty-one and ending May thirty-one, twenty twenty-six. So no more wet floors. You know. Okay, number eleven. Prove change order number one, final for the contract with Freedom Roofing Window and Siding for the Gerard Multi-Generational Gym Roof, Center Roof Replacement. Funded through PY twenty twenty-three CDBG Community Development Board, and authorized President of Board Chelmo County Commissioners, sign the change order number one, uh, it's a net reduction of twenty-eight forty, divides the total contract from sixty-eight seven thirty-four to sixty-five eight ninety-four. Reduction is a result of the final calculation quantities.
Julie Green, Planning Commission, this is another project funded through the PY twenty-three CDBG program that's recently completed. We also have another out-for-bid for the Helen Scope Center, and then the last one will be bid by the end of the year, that was authorized in twenty twenty-three.
Okay, so what we're talking roofs, how are we looking on the engineer's garage?
It's coming, we are in the final stages of them getting started, they're gonna hire a subcontractor, a local company, to rip off and then at least get halfway through. They will be covered and dry this fall, so, yeah, Randy Smith and Tom is in the loop, I'm sorry, Bill, Chelmo County Maintenance. They've been in our loop, since we've been out there starting, so they know the justice, what's going on, so they are all in agreement how we're going forward with the roof to keep them dry.
Is, is that the longest-running roof project in the history of county government?
Thank you, thank you, yes, sir, in my experience, knowing Chelmo County Maintenance, yes.
It's gonna be updated somewhere. Be excited when that's done, number twelve. Authorized Denny Moye, President of Board Chelmo County Commissioners, to sign a notice to proceed letter for TK Excavating and Grading for the Townsend Avenue Storm Drainage Infrastructure Improvement Project, funded through the PY twenty twenty-two CDBG Critical Infrastructure Grant Program, and CDBG revolving loan fund.
Julie Green, Chelmo County, the, this is another CDBG-funded project, the Critical Infrastructure Grant, that is getting ready to begin soon to address the storm drainage.
Okay. Thirteen, authorized Chelmo County Planning Commission to send notification layers to all Chelmo County licensed drain layers and as a request for price proposal packets for the ARP Countywide Sanitary Lateral Assistance Program. Will be developed Chelmo County Sanitary Engineers Office, eight forty-two Youngstown Kingsville Road, a fee of a hundred dollars will be charged per price proposal packet. Price proposal packets include technical specs for seventeen income-qualified owner-occupied households in four batches. Uh, seven households in Champion, five households in Gerard and Brian, a township, two households in Majory and Brookfield, and three in West Farmington.
Julie Green, Chelmo County, we've been working, our office has been working with Gary's office on this project, this is ARP funding, and so we're at the point where we're getting ready to bid these out, and related to that, I sent all of the MOUs to the ARP attorney this morning for her review and approval, so once she, uh, reviews those and finalizes them for those ten projects, we'll be, um, have all of those ones obligated.
All right.
But, uh, the West Farmington households, those are sort of the ones that we weren't able to capture when we, when the Commissioners funded the West Farmington connections back in twenty-two and twenty-three with CDBG funds.
Yeah, uh, yeah, Gary Newbrow, Sanitary Engineer, Bill McCosky of our office, he's been working, uh, extensively on these, uh, connections, I, I mean, it's, besides just the, the county-wide slab, he has, uh, Goville Drive, uh, Sheridan Drive, Scott Street.
Yankee Lake.
Yankee Lake, uh, I mean, he's been working on these, I mean, that's saving the county a heck of a lot of money, uh, for him to be able to do all this in-house.
Right.
And with these initial seventeen out of the county-wide slab, basically, we're, um, eliminating, uh, the waiting list that Emily had, and I could see those seven there in Champion Township, that's on State Road Phase Two, uh, so.
Yeah, Julie Green, another partner crucial to the project is Steve Pop at the Combined Health District.
Yes.
He's been working with us on these for years.
Yeah, we, we need Steve Pop to go into each house, as Bill writes the spec on what needs to be done in each house, so he's been working well with us, too.
Definitely a collaborative effort.
Okay, number fourteen, stop the resolution recognizing twenty twenty-four Chelmo County's Centenarians, National Centenarian Day is observed annually on September twenty-second as a day to celebrate and honor those who have reached the age of one hundred. It is a great pleasure the Board of Chelmo County Commissioners joins the residents of Chelmo County, recognized with respect and admiration and contribution senior citizens in our community, the longevity of life is a blessing, these individuals and for a community which benefits from the knowledge, creativity, experiences these individuals bring to all. Uh, special note, a presentation of the Centenarian Proclamation will be held September twenty-fifth. That's Commissioners' regular meeting for any centenarian present, and honor all individual, individuals listed on the proclamation. Diane?
Hello, oh, I don't have a chair, it's my Julie's left chair, uh, Diane.
You have a right-hand chair, these ladies. You have a right hand chair, these ladies.
Um, next week we'll have the Centenarian Proclamation to be read. Last year we had twelve, lost five. This year we have twenty-one, so we gained another twelve this year. The oldest one was here last year, she's still here this year, a hundred and seven years old.
Oh, God.
So it's been fun, this is the only fun part I have in my job.
What, what was her name, Tim, man? She was at that event, wasn't she?
Last year, she was at the event. She made it, so I've gotta reach out to all the centenarian family members to see who might be able to make it.
That's twenty-one.
Twenty-one, wow.
Twelve.
Yeah, and it should be get older, because we're all gonna live longer, right? The list is gonna keep growing. If you guys make it.
Yeah.
Thank you.
All right. Fifteen, resolution for ARPA funds Bloomfield Township ambulance in the amount of a hundred and seventy thousand dollars. And then sixteen is the, the resolution that goes along with that. Seventeen, Eagle Joint Fire District. And that's the amount of a hundred and seventy-nine thousand for an ambulance. And then eighteen is the rule that goes along with that. Nineteen is Howland Township ambulance, a hundred and seventy-five seven eighty-two. And the resolution that goes along with that. And then Southington Ambulance, number twenty-one. And resolution goes along with that, one sixty-five. Um, that's awesome, that's four more ambulances we're buying for the county. Uh, Howland Township will be here to receive their check. Uh, so we need to have checks prepared. I'll reach out to, uh, Mr. Hernandez from Hubbard Township to see if he wants to come with a fire chief there. Also reach out to trustee in Southington and a, Mr. Peterson, of course, in Bloomfield, if he's available, if he wants to send his police chief, um, and we'll do presentations to them. That's a pretty big deal. That's one way that we're really, really serving the community. Uh, because that's gonna benefit everybody in their township and other residents that get unforeseen bad circumstances when they're passing through. And we're crossing our fingers for Bristol. So we hope that there's, finds a way. Twenty-two, enter an agreement buying between Board Chumby County Commissioners and Southington Township, oh, that's the one we just got through with that. Twenty-three?
Commissioner, real quick, if I can, Alex Dean Johnson-Bush. I was, uh, working and you guys got a call. Dawn obviously sits right outside of my office. She didn't know how to appropriately answer, so I, I think we gave them the right answer. But I just want to give you a heads up. Um, Hubbard, not Hubbard, excuse me. Diana Township is calling and inquiring about how to put in an additional application for ARPA funds for specifically an ambulance. That's why I wanted to bring this up right now. I instructed her to tell them that they need to reach out to Mar Deodor.
Yep.
And I did also let them know that for her to instruct them that she is on vacation right now, but she will answer when she can get to it. Um, they did want to speak, you know, to a commissioner, if you guys want to reach out to them, that's fine. But I just wanted to be transparent and let you know that they're probably gonna be looking for additional funds. Um, the gentleman also asked if they had been already awarded funds. And I said, I told Dawn to say, well, yes, they did, they got radios. Um, so I, there's some confusion there, I'm not sure what's going on, but I just want to give you that.
Well, it's fine, I haven't, they've had many changeovers.
Yeah, I didn't really want to get into all that, but it's not my job. I just, you know, wanted to make sure you knew that they are calling. Um, and in absence of auditor Yoder, I think they were probably trying to get a hold of her and couldn't, which makes sense because she's not here. So if they're listening, um.
Not a problem, we'll get the number from Dawn, I can call and, and tell them the procedure of what we have.
Perfect, thank you.
Uh, number twenty-three. Establish creation of blueprint Phase Two Water Improvements Project Number Two W nineteen Fund, known as Fund Four Fifty-Six, for use by Chumby County Sanitary Engineers Department. Funds will be used to extend water infrastructure in the Braceville Township Public Water System. Initial funding will be provided by five hundred thousand dollar promissory note. Gary?
Uh, Bob, you're gonna take, well, this is our blueprint phase. Gary Newbrow, sanitary engineer, this is our blueprint Phase Two project. I mentioned to you, um, I don't know, about six weeks ago that we were gonna expand the, uh, scope of that project. And we need a project fund for it, um, in order to, uh, modify the current engineering contract to include that expanded scope.
Uh, twenty-four, incur Chumby County Engineer to grant special energy supply fleet permit, Delquodre Lawn Maintenance and Landscaping. Twenty-five, Chumby County Engineer hauling permit, Jero Transportation. Twenty-six, authorized Denny Moye, President of Board of Commissioners, to execute a letter of support on behalf of the Board for the National Center for Urban Solutions. Application for Digital Equity Competitive Grant Program, provided by National Telecommunications and Information Administration. This organization is committed to collaborating with the NTUS tech to address the digital divide that continues to affect underserved communities, including low-income households, elderly individuals, veterans, people with disabilities, racial and eth- ethnic minorities and rural residents. As further request of Reverend John Michael Oliver, Director of National Center for Urban Studies and African-American Wellness Agency in conjunction with the Director, Northeast Ohio Regional Workforce. Letter of support recorded in the journal for journal purposes. So this is just a letter that they will use to hopefully acquire some funding in awareness for the issue. Twenty-seven, amend Commissioners' regular meeting agenda item number twenty-five dated March thirteenth twenty-four. Approve an agreement buying between Chumby County Board of Commissioners, Chumby County Sheriff Paul Monroe and Operation Underground Railroad to purchase computer voice stress analyzer for Chumby County Sheriff's Office in the amount of seventy-seven ninety-five. It'll pay three thousand eight ninety-seven fifty towards the purchase of it. Uh, it's necessary to correct the vendor name and address to NITV Federal Services, um, and the fund number, uh, adjustment. So we already approved it, we just have to clean up a little bit with who, who we're making the check to.
Um, and that's gonna need to be adjusted too, I'm sorry, that's Fund O-O-One at eleven, Fund Eleven, okay.
Okay.
Do you see it?
Yep.
Okay, Ma, we have some more business we'll do at the end.
Okay.
Um, but there's some people here, let's, let's get to, get to them and take care of their things before we have executive session again, so.
Uh, it's whether we come.
You should know the procedure by now, you're not a rookie.
James Allen, Allenway Farms. Uh, what was the outcome with what I've mentioned to you and Mario about the water?
So we got a prosecutor's opinion on it. And, and if that's okay with, uh, Mr. Malloy, I'd, I'd lay privilege to, to send it to you. But, um, there were some additional questions that we wanted, that Mr. Malloy wanted to ask, that I would entertain about, uh, said property. So that's where we're at right now. But I can let you, um, look at the prosecutor's opinion if you'd like.
Okay, okay.
See if that's okay with you.
No, I got no problem with that at all.
Then I got one other one.
Yeah, okay.
I've been working with Nick Hawkins and Randy Smith. Uh, we're expanding, like everybody knows. And, uh, Nick, Julie Green might have a little bit of information about it. It's about the TEF, where Randy is able to use, apply for TEF money. But he don't have enough funds to improve the infrastructure of the road. So he gave me a copy of what it would cost to improve the road. And he was wanting to know if the county would use ARP money for the additional improvements of the road from our driveway to five thirty-four. And he's.
Any idea what the amount?
He gave me an estimate there for it this week.
Three hundred and forty-four thousand?
Yeah.
I can't see that happening anyway, because that would be half of what we got left in ARPA money.
I, I, that's, that's what he was looking at. But I don't know how he was, how much money he was looking for.
Right. I guess we'd have to know that before we can make a decision. But three forty-four is not gonna be doable for one individual, one roadway, and not a township-related project, um.
It's a county project, so.
Uh, i- it is in a sense, um, but we're, at the maybe list, we're still looking at forty on the maybe list we have to address. It's just a math thing it comes down to. Um, I guess what I would ask is, get, see if you get some further information on him on real, real values, you know, what he's putting into it, or what he can put into it, and what he's, what the difference is.
Because I know he does collect two thousand dollars a year for red usage. So he has that money that he's collected over the years, too.
Yes, you know, problem with that. And then the prosecutor's opinion, uh, we can email that to you, or you can pick a copy of it up. We can get our, uh, court to get you a copy of it after the meeting and read what he has to say there. Again, I still, of course, my opinion, I, I think, in the situation that he's in, I think that we have to own some responsibility for the issue that happened there. And I, I've talked to Attorney Blair about it, I've talked to Gary about it. Um, there are some legal things within the ORC that we can and can't do when it comes to dealing with billing and collecting public money. Uh, and then some of that is in the opinion. And then some of it's kind of the gray area there, I guess, to, to look to see if there's, you know, which ways we can help you out in some way, shape, or form, so that we accept some responsibility for the mistake. I just don't wanna say, well, we made a mistake, it's your fault, you know, we're, we're not gonna do that. Um, I guess that's what it stands. So read the letter and then see what, after you read that, what, you can discuss what the opinion is. If you're ready to call me or Ma, and, and, uh, and we'll, try to work with it the best way we can. Mike?
I just want to make one comment on that. Bill Danso from the Prosecutor's Office, and while Bob and Gary are both here, just one thing I, I want to be clear on that I've always understood from sanitary engineer and water and sewer angle is that you guys essentially are not a, a, a profit-making enterprise, that it's, it's essentially an enterprise fund that money coming in pays for the services that are going out, in theory. And, you know, uh, there's issues, I think, that arise when we start to talk about forgiving people's payments, because for every dollar that someone has forgiven in a payment, somebody else in the water system is gonna eat that charge. So I just want the Commissioners to understand that as you, as you move forward with making your decision on this, that in a case where we know how much water was used, in a case where we can actually account for what the bill should be, even in the case of a mistake, if you forgive those amounts, someone else is ultimately paying for that, because those funds then are gonna be reflected in the rate that others pay. And if I'm incorrect in what I'm saying, I, I, you know, welcome, the sanitary engineer's supposed to correct me.
Perfect, perfectly.
Okay.
Yes.
I, that's all I wanted to kind of throw out there as you guys consider.
And that's in the letter, Bill, I think, to, to that extent.
I, I understand that too. But then again, I understand there was a technical malfunction, which there is a vendor that we bought the equipment from, and I think someone has to back their product somewhat too, that whether in training on use of the product, or product, or the product itself, there, there's always gray area wiggle room written into every, anything you do to cover things like this, um, you know, written into the price. So I understand, yeah, we're not making a profit out of it, we don't wanna lose money or make someone else pay. But there's gotta be something built in there somewhere, I just feel what's right is right. And this is one of the things where there's the ORC, there's this, that. But when a mistake is made, um, you know, there's a cost involved with it. You know, if, if, if one of our employees were to run over somebody's mailbox, we'd pay for it. If one of our employees throws a trunk of salt and breaks someone's window, we'd pay for it. If, if some of our machinery doesn't work correctly, you know, I think in a sense we have to own some responsibility for that. And that's just the precedent I'm trying to set here is, we're not fault-free just because we're government. And because we, we have the power of, you know, the government behind us. You know, I don't wanna steamroll or any citizen, if we can avoid it. Okay, Mike Salamone.
Thanks, Commissioner. Mike Salamone, Chumby County Transit Administrator. Um, senior levy for the stable contract vendors. Um, the actual date, I believe, it will be, will be November, November thirtieth of this year. We have a one-year extension. Um, myself, Diane, and Ted Starr talked about it. We will do a little bit of the extension, but not all of it. We're planning going out for RFP. The RFP should start, I mean, the new contract should start roughly January first. So I just wanted to let you know that we're coming with an RFP in the shortly here, or the RFP that I would like to sign out, and we would like to sign out, is a three-year RFP. I just want, I don't pay.
I'm, I'm.
So the two parts that I had was number one, we'll be coming with an RFP as well.
Ho- hopefully, because you're, you're going out for a three-year, you can attract more. Oh.
Sorry, I turned it off. I'm usually.
Happy to see it.
Turn all that off.
Um. And we're operating on a one-year now?
No, we're operating on a two-plus-one.
Okay.
This will be a three-plus-one.
But I think a three-plus-one maybe can attract some larger, um, providers.
Correct.
And, and drive down costs with more competition.
That's, uh, okay, uh.
That's hopefully what, because that's what, um, what I estimate from you is, a lot of these other providers don't wanna bid on a two-year, because they don't know if they're gonna, you know, the longer they're there, the longer they know they're gonna have solid income and more they can invest in their fleet and that sort of thing.
Yeah, so, um, I, I presently don't wanna call the bidders, let's, let's, what are we gonna call it? There's fourteen companies that are definitely interested in bidding on this. Uh, four of them are original vendors that we have, so I've got ten others that this will.
Yeah.
Definitely interested. Like I said, I think we'll be coming to you with the RFP plus extension until at least in January.
And the local share, of course.
I'll bet you.
Currently I'm waiting till the end of September to review the budget. We asked for the extension. We are not going to be asking for extended money. We have some leftover local share money for our two-year program. Try to work out the accounting on that end. And then, um, with that, we asked for the extension, this change in the funding, coming forward with those requests for local share, and then the RFP. So there's going to be a lot of transportation discussion in the next few months.
Sure.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, with that, um, Diane, do you know when you'll be ready to absorb the department around the, and on the end of the building from you?
Two thousand twenty-three I was ready.
I mean, did we set a date already with you when her, when her mon- funds run out and when she comes over to you?
She is projected to be missed over.
About this year? Okay, with that, we, we looked yesterday, Alex and I, um, had the opportunity, kind of figured out, because you two, you'll be working with her, and your space, of course, in your office seems small to put another office in there, have two of you in that office, that's something, we'll have to have a discussion with you on what to do. She's got four offices in her building, you've got the one office in the conference room in your building. We kind of came up with tentative suggestions there. And Commissioner, with, uh, this is something that, if, to bring you aware of now that we're public, is, uh.
It'll be good.
Yeah, is the potential possibly of maybe moving you down to her office, remodeling, so that you have the space that you need, there's four offices there, and keeping your office where it is with the conference room to still utilize.
We don't use that conference room?
You don't use that one?
No, because of the technology availability in there.
Okay.
I've been using the quarter D's office for three years now.
Okay.
That's full technology.
So then you wouldn't need that space at all then?
No.
And, but if you're open to it, and we, and we'll, we'll discuss. What's that?
Too often, it's in the office.
Well, then that's possibly something too, then, we can remodel that back if you're not using the conference area to move her that, and then us maybe being more attractive with the other one that does have four offices in a back area. Some way of putting you together, I guess, is we had looked for a plan. And with that same plan, I would like to move Mike from where he is, be closer to you, being that he's working with you pretty much on a day-to-day basis, whether it be in that same office, or possibly the coroner's office upstairs, or somewhere where he's walking distance when he needs you and not have to drive back and forth from his office to you and deal with the parking and, and all that stuff he deals with on a daily basis. So I'd say he's just a natural fit if we're gonna put two of them together, if we can put transit in with that, um, as they.
Yeah, and you have space for two offices, you said, in that conference room, right when you walk in?
There's room in there.
It's just a bit over the wall.
More room than the OEA office, for sure. OEA is very tight and tiny.
I mean, there's Commissioners, Alex, you and John, people are search-based. But what, what we need you guys to do is, you know, obviously give us some directive on what you wanna do, because this is imminent, like it's happening.
Her, her office has four.
Wait a second, what is imminent?
So Mary Beth Humphrey, her fund manager.
Right, no, I get that, but what else? Right, no, I get that, but what else is imminent?
That's it, so, so we're gonna have to close down.
Yeah, I mean, that's not a huge concern, obviously, right now, I don't.
I, I mean, we have.
I mean, it's imminent, but she has room in her office.
Yeah, like we have.
Yeah, but there's not a desk, there's nothing there for it, and, and she's in the office right now, we're paying for it.
We can move a desk in tomorrow.
Yeah.
I know that. But we have four offices and a back room where she is, and then we could blow walls out, and that, that's much bigger.
That's not what I'm talking about with you. That's something. What I'm talking is, we just need to get this employee in her, that's it. I, I'm just gonna say, I'm not saying remodel at all, I'm just saying, I just need to know where you wanna place this employee, that's all.
With her?
Yes.
With the desk, with her?
Yes, yes, yes.
In the conference room?
Correct. Or wherever you want it to be, I don't care, just as long as I can tell the employee where she's going, because she does feel a little bit, um, I spoke with her a little bit yesterday.
Well, she's gonna be working under you, so.
They need to be together.
And there's a lot of clutter and junk in her office that. Not yours, the other office is not gonna be needed anymore, and we have to figure that, cause right now it's a cluttered mess of years and years and years with the stuff that's been dumped there. Right. And that, that will be a triage office for somebody, because of the number of spaces that are in there, um, for us to utilize somehow.
Sure, can be used one day, but.
And now the bigger thing, um. We moved the coroner out of the hospital, and I went and looked at the morgue, I don't know if you've ever been down there?
Of course.
Ridiculously, it looked like I was in a Saw movie when I went in there, the smell, the dirt, the grime, the cooler doesn't work half the time. I mean, I cannot believe that for years and years and years, all the way back to, uh, the coroner before Dr. Germanic, they've been utilizing the morgue there, is the most despicable conditions I've ever seen any county employee ever work in. And they got, they came, went out of there, and we got them in the temporary housing, went and looked at the temporary housing we have for them, where they set up a makeshift morgue, which again, looks, I was waiting for the Hollywood producer to say action. And it looks like something that someone whipped up in their garage, which is basically, it's in a garage with curtains. And a mad scientist there that's gonna do autopsies on bodies under a spotlight hanging from the ceiling, and it's just crazy. And then we have a trailer in there, literally with bodies inside of it, parked in there, plugged into the wall, the trailer that's on loan from the state. It's the most backwards hilljack setup I've ever seen in my entire life, but it'll work, but right now, that, I mean, kudos to Dr. D'Amico, he didn't complain one bit at all with these conditions, he just rolls with it.
Nor did Dr. Germanic.
Right, well, Dr. Germanic is a mad scientist himself, too, he got, wanna do what they do, he's a special type of person. Um, but the conditions there are, are deplorable. We're, we're taking bodies that there could be evidence in them, there could be a lot of, uh, just foul play, suspicion, that they need to be treated with the utmost care and concern, especially if there's ever a conviction, or gonna be a conviction on foul play being involved in a murder or in a death. And right now, the, the conditions of where it is, is, is just not hospitable to that at all. We talked about the, the old health department, of course, moving them into the health department. Um, the, we had talked about, about three hundred grand, we thought, to move them. We met with the architect yesterday, and with the current standards, we need to follow with the state for ventilation, for the plumbing. The architect is over two point two million to put them into the Chestnut Building. Is that right, Bill?
I didn't know the exact number, but yes, it'd be around two point two million dollars for the new coroner's office and facility, um.
Which is ridiculous, we're gonna take a three hundred, or a thirty-four thousand dollar property that we own, and potentially tool it for two million dollars, makes no sense. So.
I'd have to talk to the architect, I didn't, I didn't know about that.
Excuse me, Commissioners, I just, I didn't print out the fees of the architect, he had sent me a revised cost of what the fees would be right now as we stand. Um, we are seventy-eight thousand now into the architect design firm, cause it was changed more than three times, four times, five times. So the amount of cost that it, we initially went into was forty-nine, or forty-nine thousand five hundred dollars for its fifty thousand under fee. And it's now exceeded the seventy-eight, cause of all the changes that we have gone through with the doc, and the process of the morgue, and what it, he wants to see happen in his facility. Um, to finish the actual cost of the project with the architect design engineer, will be over a hundred thousand dollars. And if there's an additional change, that would have to go off on R Q. I discussed with Mr. Danzo, our prosecutor, um, if we move to another location, we'd have to go off on R Q, cause that's another additional money that's oversaw.
What other location?
Uh, it would be behind the E M A, where a potential site where the new one-one, nine-one-one center would have been. It was sketched out in a square behind the print, in a print.
After, after meeting yesterday, we looked at it, we said for two point two million, that didn't even include the furnishings inside, that's just to retool the building for what the specs needed for the state, the HVAC's a big problem. And you have to have a specialized HVAC because of decomposition and disease and things like that. Um, and the drains also, there's special, specialty type things that had to do with the drains to remove bodily fluids and stuff like that. Um, it came in, it just makes sense, when we showed them the E M A building, and, and its entirety, the whole building, and Dr. D'Amico said he would be totally happy and content with a brick building like that, doesn't have to be bells and whistles, a workplace where his investigators have space right now, they're working upstairs from the, the senior levy above the Board of Elections. And there's like eight people crammed in one room with, they can't even talk at the same time on the phone, cause they're being drowned out by the person talking next to them. We have the highest-paid employee in the county working there, sharing an office with the coroner, and they don't even have a meeting place to meet with families, so.
They do. But they could use, they could use the senior.
Commissioner Frenchka joined the meeting at eleven forty-four, that was Commissioner Frenchka. Um, for what he does, and, and the amount of business he gets, and we're, and the potential, we are doing things already with Ashbyul and Giaga on autopsies, and billing them, um, with just a modern facility, he knows he can increase the business, which will increase the revenue brought into the county, um, from the increased business that they have, with just a simple pole building-ish type thing on the property, or potentially where we already own, and be under that two point two million that would cost to just retool Chestnut Street.
So we're talking pole barn building?
Well, not so much pole barn, but a brick on a slab, basically, they get.
I, I find it hard to believe, with construction being at three hundred to three hundred and fifty dollars a square foot, that they're gonna be able to construct something right now, or under that.
The, the architect that we saw yesterday, he gave me a glance for that, and he said.
I'd have to talk to the architect.
I, I understand that, but he said.
I'm getting this secondhand.
I know that, but he, but the architect said yesterday, yeah, he said we, about one point five million, you could build the building, was it the doctor wanted with the specs that he gave us?
Oh, no.
What do you need in there? The architect's saying it. You need to use the microphone, Commissioner, if you're in, talk. If you're gonna be recognized, you gotta use the microphone, if you're gonna be recognized. It's not gonna be recorded for the record, you can talk, but it's not gonna be recorded for the record. Honestly, follow the rules.
Okay. So.
No, that was rude.
It is, it, whatever, okay, so.
We're used to it.
This sounds, it sounds like you have been allowing someone, I don't know who gave him, you, maybe, have been allowing the coroner to just do everything without consulting with the Board of Commissioners. So it started out a smaller thing, has been reworked and changed, and the duh, design is going up and up and up without, because of what he, he wants. There's, there's two things, there's wants and there's needs. And I think that leaving the entire Board of Commissioners out of this, and allowing maintenance, I believe, to just deal directly with someone who has his wish list, that he's not responsible for paying, that it comes out to us, has been a process riddled with errors, as far as I'm concerned. Like, I don't know how.
He's asked for the most basic of basics, he hasn't asked for anything.
Basic of basic isn't two million dollars, I'm sorry.
That's not him. He asked for three hundred thousand, when the architect came in and said that with the HVAC standards and the plumbing laws we have now to be compliant,
Mm-hmm.
it's gonna cost two point two million, and most of that is gonna be in HVAC and in the plumbing, he said.
Well, we haven't seen it, and he hasn't.
And the cooler.
Every time they have, every time, it sounds like you're having communications, and you're having communications, and you're not bringing it, have you had communications?
No.
And you're not.
That's why I'm here today, as opposed to communications yesterday.
And we're, and we're not bringing, we're not bringing it to the attention of the board, so that we, we are responsible for making down, making sure that costs are affordable for, for the process, not to create a business, it sounds like he's more interested in creating a business, and, and with all, my opinion is, it doesn't matter how much someone makes. If they have to share a space, they have to share a space, because we have to be watching out on our costs. This has been going on for years, it doesn't matter if someone makes a certain dollar amount, okay? This is, this is what has been going on. There was an ability to, to use the old office apart where Dr. Germanic used to go, with the barber area, right?
That's, that's, that's disgusting building, yeah, we can remodel that whole building and ignore that.
Well, I'm saying. Hang on. No, stop. As an ability to just have a conference room, because it's first floor accessible, because that's what they originally asked for, and that would have made sense, and county staff could have done that without paying a penny. Also, we still do have, uh, we, there is access very close by, and it's ADA accessible, to use the, um, the conference room at the, um, right across the way over, it, it actually connects through a senior levy. That conference room there would be appropriate to speak to families.
Martin Conference Room?
Yeah, if there's a meeting.
It's not ADA compliant.
Oh, it's not ADA compliant, okay.
No, no, that's why Sharon March, that's why we are now at the D E building.
Okay, okay. Well, there's, there is a, it, it'd be much more cost-effective to, at, at least in the interim, create a little space there where people have already been going to, to speak to people. And then, I believe though, a, a long while ago, there was a discussion about the, the, uh, the building that Mr. Vele, Velezki bought in the past. Um, and then, also, we still have, uh, I heard we still have a lease with Trump, Trump, Trump Memorial Hospital.
Can't use that, that space there was the.
Okay, and I have asked for.
The HVAC and the plumbing isn't working there.
Oh.
That's, that's why we had to get out of there.
You can't use it, cause the HVAC isn't, and plumbing isn't working there?
Right.
And so, would you, but.
It was like ninety degrees there yesterday, no ventilation with dead bodies that are decomposing, and even the cooler, they've, they still have bodies in the cooler right now.
I know, I know.
Here's my thing, here's my thing, if you vacate the health department building, which has already been vacated, what do we do with that building? And you could say tear it down, but that's gonna be over, close to a million dollars to tear it down.
I think we have to go back and maybe rework.
But we need, when we, when we acquire new assets, we have to have a plan for those old assets. And, or else, we're just, we're gonna have another wing building here.
Yeah.
I know, but we're kind of in an emergency situation here, where a morgue is failing, there are police cases, there are families out there losing loved ones every day. And, and I'll tell you what, Maro, you wouldn't wanna, I wouldn't stay there one night in a morgue, and if, if it was my family member, I'd just stay there overnight in that morgue, the way the condition was, and they're, they're, I'd end up their last, their body's last moments on earth in that place. It, I, I can't do that to a family here. I'm not gonna let a family go through that.
I, I just need to talk to the architect and get some information, cause I'm getting it secondhand.
I, I, I don't even wanna, I'd like to ask that it not just be talking to the architect, I wanna see what has happened, the design, the, the design that we originally had, the changes, the, the upgrades, and the, and the communication between the coroner and the architect, because they don't get to just dictate how the county spends money.
They're not, he's dictating what his needs are there, and then we've got, gotta give him his needs, we gotta give him a cooler, we gotta give him a table to operate on, we gotta give him the ventilation that he needs, he has to have office space for records and files for his employees.
Utter miscommunication, because as, as a Board of Commissioners, I'm gonna make this suggestion right here, you guys can agree with it or disagree with it, but I said this from day one. Um, we, we should have meeting minutes written, so that you can point to things. We should also have, minimally, agenda items, anytime an employee is instructed to spend money, or told that they can do this or that or the other, journal action would help us, so that we can point to that occasion and know what's going on. Because I don't know when we decided to allow the cost to escalate to whatever he said it was today, but I never saw it come through on our end.
We didn't allow it to get to that point, we were, we were.
Yeah, we haven't allowed it yet.
We have not allowed it.
I thought you said that there's already been costs, design costs, already created eighty.
There are design costs, for the, for the health department building.
Right.
There's seventy-five thousand that we've already invested in that.
But what was it, what was the cap? When we, when we approved that, what was it? Where's the journal action, do you have that? I mean, does someone have that to know that we're not go, that, that it's just not going up and going up and going up?
Nothing's going up, it, it's like, for the basic necessities, the basic necessities, the what do you need there?
Did we start it off, did we start it off approving fifty thousand dollars, or did we start it off approving seventy-five?
Seventy-five.
No, it was forty-nine thousand five hundred.
I'm, I'm sorry.
Now the cost is, that's right. Cause it's under the fifty threshold.
That's all we approved, so that's all we can pay. And if they're doing things contrary to, to, to our, uh, guidelines associated with spending for a county, they have to come and get an approved change order that we vote on. So did we do that? Am I missing something, or is someone, did that, did that come to you, or, cause I heard you earlier in the meeting, Denny, say, you know, there's the advice code, and there's this, but sometimes we have to do what we feel like doing. That's not correct, and I think he can tell you that.
Bill Danzo, Prosecutor's Office, I, I don't think that's, I don't think that's correct when it comes to design fees. The statute on that says you pick not based on price, but based on the most qualified firm to do the work. The, the estimated design fee was forty-nine thousand five hundred. I don't know how, I don't know how it, I don't know how it got up as high as it did, that's not, that didn't come through, but I am, I'd have to double check, but I don't believe you need change orders for professional design fees.
Will you double check to the maximum amount, because I know we might be, like it's changed from fifty to seventy-five for that amount, so if it's.
It's still, that statute has not changed to seventy-five, it is still forty, it's still, anything with an estimated design fee of under fifty thousand can go through the expedited award process. And that's what was, that's what it was originally approved under, because the estimated design fee was forty-nine thousand five hundred at the time it was originally approved.
So how, how high can they go without, like, bringing it back to us for, for trouble?
So not seventy-five, fifty-five? Is that all right?
No, if you look at the back page.
I'm sorry.
How high can it go off the nine-five and?
That's, again, all the statute says is the estimated design fee is under fifty thousand, and it was to begin with. I can't answer anything beyond that at this point, because I don't know where this is all gone and all that, but.
So who's given the approval to do this? That's what I'm saying.
All right, let's, let's get, let's get back on track for this real quick. So we have a building that, that would lay empty, that we'd either have to demolish or sell, or give away. Uh, we have, um, i- if new construction is one point five million, I wanna see this actual facility, because it won't be sturdy. It, it's gonna be a pole barn type facility, because, or it's gonna be extremely small, and, and maybe not fit their needs. Um, and I'll talk to the architect about that. And then, you, you have, what we're trying to do in downtown Warren with the Fund for Warren's Future, and try to build up, and, and we're gonna sit here and, and let a, a building either demolish it or, or lie vacant, I don't think that's what fits into what we're trying to do in downtown.
Yeah, but you can't finish the size eleven foot into the size H U. And that building, I'm telling you, Maro, it's two floors for what they need, for him to be able to perform autopsies in there and have the space and be, have that building work, it's two point two million. Like, we talked to the architect, he said might be able to shave two hundred thousand off of it. So it's like two million, I, I, you.
Why don't we have the architect come and give a, like, cause I, I, and.
I wanna see what he's gonna build for one point five million.
When he was changing this, and, and I know that, that this happens and things are changed, they usually come to you, and then you would come to us. And none of this has come to the Commissioners until right now, as far as I know, did you?
The discussion between architects is between architect and the, like, the official, the coroner himself, and he would ask me for advice or direction. And again, this is his facility, his building, I'm here to try to help him get what he needs.
So you, oh, you omitted the Commissioners, and it, we should have never been omitted, cause we're paying for this. I mean, we're approving it, we're trying.
True, correct, and it would be up to the Board to decide whether you approve it or not.
And I don't think, did I miss an email from the coroner's office saying, hey, this is going up and up and up, or am I, is this, was I left out of the loop, or was everyone?
On to, on top of the fact that we have seventy-five thousand invested in this right now, we're into the, so we'd have to re-engineer it, redesign it, is what.
That's, and, that's, and then we have to go off on R Q.
I, I have questions for the architect.
And, and the coroner, and everything that he, that you want, because it's not a, whatever you get is exactly what you get situation when we're dealing, dealing with taxpayers' money. It's just, no.
Well, we're still in a situation, we've got dead bodies, and a garage, and a plug-in cooler that the state loaned us until January. And as, as of January, the price of that goes up to forty-eight thousand dollars, I believe it is, to, to utilize that cooler again, in hopes that the coroner would be moved by April or May, was what the plan was. And that's clearly not gonna happen at this level, but we're still back to the situation of the coroner needs a place to work, people are still gonna continue to die. Uh, police investigations are still gonna need to occur, and autopsies are still gonna need to be performed.
Well, I could talk to the, the State, I already made them aware. Well, I could talk to the, the state. I already made them aware that the issue with Trump Memorial Hospital had an impact on our lease there. They weren't aware of that.
I, I talked to Sandy O'Brien and Nick Santucci, not saying about help with the morgue and their health.
No, I'm talking about, I'm talking about the department, the Department of Health and EMA.
Right.
There's other places down at the state that, that they were completely unaware of a lot of the situations that we faced as a result of the, of the steward health debacle, so.
Commissioners, uh, Bill, Trump County Maintenance, for the record, the commis-, um, coroner doesn't have a lease. He pays per individuals that show up at the morgue.
He said he had a lease of the, of the-
No, he pays per body, per individual, sorry. Um, and as far as the, uh, cooler goes, it's free of charge. I was talking, I talked to the gentleman from the State Board of Health and John Hickey, uh, our EMA director said the same thing, that it's free up until that point. June is the latest.
June of next year.
June of twenty-five, yes.
Not to say that that's what we wanna do, but that's-
Uh, June, June of twenty-five, the cooler's free.
That gives us some leaving room for something that was out of our control with Trump Memorial.
And to go forward with that further, I'm sorry, um, if it stays longer, I'm sure it could stay longer because that cooler is designed for a mass casualty thing. Knock on wood, we don't have any of those in the state of Ohio, so that's the only reason why we have it now at this point, not for free.
And also, the, uh, uh, the Trump Memorial Health Campus, they said that they will not be doing anything there that's not, um, you'll be cutting things that are not medically sound. And so, there are a lot of infrastructure or capital improvements that they were going to do at that, at that hospital right away. Um, and because the investment was not preserved properly. So it could be that by the time this happens, there won't be this emergency and that-
And they would have put capital back into it is what you're saying.
Right, right.
Potentially.
But, yeah, exactly. But, um, just saying, I, I don't, I'm not in a, I'm not in a hurry to spend a million dollars. It's kinda where I'm at with it, so. And I, and I know that the state will work with us in particular because of the, the, the situation that we have relative to the hospital. And I think that they'll be, uh, a little more amenable to helping us in ways.
And the fact that we have one of the only forensic pathologists from here to Cleveland and we service three counties right now.
Yes.
Uh, I, I'm gonna tell you, Brian, yesterday she felt pretty confident being that there's three counties involved that she can get some funding from the state, as did Representative Santucci.
About what? To create what you wanna create out there or for something else? Because you have to bring that back to the board.
Funding for a morgue, funding for a morgue for our, our coroner to be able to-
Out there at that new locate, okay.
At any location, funding for it. And we didn't give a location for it. But we know it's gonna cost money for him to be able to upgrade, to be able to continue the work that he does. Even the cooler at the hospital is insufficient at this point.
Too small.
It was too small and there were bodies in there from the hospital when we were there yesterday that didn't even leave room for bodies that could come in and need an autopsy from outside of dying in the hospital.
In the interim, we have a situation, we have a, a, a solution because of, because of the morgue.
We do, but we, we are no, no make no bones about it. We are in kind of an emergency situation with our morgue right now. We're at the mercy of a makeshift garage setup that looks like a taxidermist set up in his garage.
I would like, uh, someone to email me exactly what the arrangement was because the coroner came in and said that it was, and the, the agreement or what's going on or how the bills are paid. He said that there was lease I've asked for, he didn't provide it. Maybe it's because it doesn't exist. Evidently, I'm hearing that. But either way, the situation that's going on right now with the reimbursement and how that works-
Well, it doesn't exist anymore. Stewart's gone. So whatever they had is gone.
Well, but, but what was in existence, I would like to know because I need, I will try, I will go back to the state, the Department of Health, EMA director and, and find out if they can help to extend that over there or find any way to help us because I, I consider that something that would, they're, they're trying to help our community because of the situation with the hospital. And this gives us an opportunity to get that assistance. I think we need to move that direction ASAP. And I wanna be able to ex, ex, to convey the, the arrangements that was made correctly, okay? Will you email me that? No?
No, this is, um, this is Kathleen, Misses, she's in the coroner's office. She can, um, email Dr. D'Amico and he can do it.
He'll do that? Okay.
I, I just wanna see an apples-to-apples comparison, that's all. And I haven't seen that. I'm not saying it's not a good idea. I just, you know, there's a lot of factors here. There's, when you vacate an asset and you vacate a building, you have to have a plan for it. We don't have that quite yet. Uh, that's a large structure, um, and I don't wanna see another winged building. That's, that we ensure-
And for the problem is, I think we had a plan. Oh, we're gonna put the coolers in the basement. We're gonna move there. It's gonna be nice and easy. And then the architect came in and said, um, can't do it that way. Can't do it that way. Can't do it that way. State law forbids that way. Can't do it this way. And that's where they got to the point where, and, and I go ahead and talk to the architect. I talked to him yesterday. He said he, he tried everything he could to keep it where we needed to be. He said it's not possible. It's not, in that building, in that physical building with the way the structure is and the demolition, they gotta do an interior of the building, the HVAC, the plumbing, they gotta rip all the plumbing out of the place and then put new plumbing into a building that's already been there for eighty years. And which, uh, that's a whole thing itself. That's where he said, put it on a slab, one floor where they can do plumbing when they build the slab and have it done the way you need it. That's gonna be our most cost-effective way. Now, I'm not an architect, I'm not a builder, but if an architect says we can build something new cheaper than what we can retool that building for, I gotta believe him.
I believe everyone.
So anyway, that's something we need to give an eye on. We need to, we need to work on it and it could be, and if we do it right, it'll be something that'll pay for itself down the road with the business, increased business we'll get from other counties. And, and that is a plan that the doctor had too, is we could increase our business if we had a proper facilities to do that.
And it's savings and, and tanks somebody else.
Correct. If, because what we pay to send bodies to Cuyahoga County and the four-month wait is just not acceptable. It's not acceptable for law enforcement. It's not acceptable for closure for a family to wait four months to get results and we can do it in less than four weeks in-house with the professionals that we have here that we're already paying.
Just some due diligence to do. It's all new to me, so.
And to bring everything back to-
Well, that's why we're having a public meeting. It's gotta be new to you. I couldn't call you yesterday and tell you about it.
Anything else?
I got a couple things, commissioners. Um, Bill Hart, Trump County Maintenance. Uh, Trump County Fairgrounds had an issue with some electricity last year at the fair. Uh, and a quote came in and it's up to commissioners whether you wanted to assist the fair board. Again, either pay for it, go halfers with it or, and give it to them to take care of. Uh, they had an issue at the sheep barn and it's a nine thousand one hundred dollar fix. So it's up to the board of commissioners here to decide whether, you know, you want Trump County to assist them or the fair to take care of or try to make a-
What's the issue?
They had some electricity issues, remember last year?
Same, same thing I were already about.
You brought it to my attention. I revised it and then we're gonna get it taken care of by either the board or shared or by just the fair.
Well, I did think we, when we discussed infrastructure, that was our responsibility. We fixed the telephone poles and the electric poles where we were working-
And part of the commercial barn poles that we took care of.
What is this specific? I, I think it was a hazard actually. It could prove-
Well, yeah, and that's why I have a quote.
Right. So anything, any, it's my opinion that anything that presents a, a, a health risk or a ha, safety hazard to people, um, even though the lease spells out that they need to do things because we are now aware that it could be sheer liability to the, to the county board, then I think that if it's a hazard or a risk, that it needs to, we need to make sure that it's done. Because they, they, they end up using that facility for other things as well, so.
I'm, I'm just asking the majority of the board, ones either are paying or the fair, okay?
I, I do.
Yep. I agree too. It's our, we'd be the ones getting sued if something happened.
And that's why I'm asking. So we shared a lot of things before and had them pay for a lot of things before, so I, so I'm trying to help the fair as much as we can. Uh, number two, um, I had a discussion also with Mr. Danzo on this issue. Um, I had a phone call from Mr. Gary Schaefer from the Highway Engineers. Apparently, ODNR cannot rule up the road um, to inspect their injection well on, um, oh my God, I said it wrong.
McMullen.
McMullen Street, thank you, sir. Uh, he reached out to me. The gate was locked. Um, I had said I had to get a question, permission from the commissioners because you do have any trespassing on county property or, uh, on the books. So I don't know if you want me to allow ODNR to go up there and inspect the injection well. And that's solely up to the board of commissioners or they have to find another way around to get it. The guy from ODNR, his name was Rick, he says that there is works of working to get another road out around our property, but he doesn't know when that's gonna get, be completed. So my question is, is he gonna-
He can go around.
Be to allow ODNR-
He can go around.
Let him in to go through our property when ODNR's meant to get to the injection well and inspect it.
He's been screwing around with us all along. Yeah.
Right.
That's our property. He can go around.
So he could go around?
I, I disagree. It's a state agency asking to trespass across our property. And now we're gonna play hardball with the state now? I don't think it's gonna work.
I think we need to be, my, my position is we need to be consistent. So if we're going to tell one person, it's not, it doesn't matter if there's-
So we're gonna, gonna let Brookfield Police go back there and look for a lost child or anything on our property or?
If it relates to something that's, that's, has to do with our, um, our, our situation with the marks and things like that, that's, that's fine. Because it's ours, it's, it's, and they've already put a, enough warrant here and this is gonna be one inspection and that's gonna be something else. And I think that if we sent that letter out to stop trespass, then it should be consistent across the board.
Uh, Bill Danzo, prosecutor's office. I just, one of the things I think that it's good to make clear to you guys, and I just learned it yesterday. I was under the impression that the gate had been moved to our, our, our property, to essentially the end of the county's private driveway that we have there. Apparently, that is not the case. The gate that the commissioners have locked is actually on McMullen Street, McMullen Drive that is, as I understand it, a dedicated and accepted road. So I think-
Yeah, that's, we don't wanna block that. We can't.
That's, that's what I just wanted to bring, and so I think maybe, I wanna make sure that you guys all are on the same page. I wasn't either, so.
I was not aware.
I wasn't aware of that.
Okay.
That's what, when that phone call came-
It is. It's a shit on up. It's like I did.
I mean, you were aware? Yeah, the gate was installed, I think, by Saniter to keep the kids from going up there and partying and whatever.
And I totally understand.
I was looking for the kids, so.
And I totally understand that. I, it's just that I think that that could be an issue of having a, a dedicated road that's closed. Now, if the gate was at the entrance to our private access drive, that's, you know.
How soon can we do that?
I, I can make a phone call, a quote, yes.
Now, yeah. That has nothing to do with, you know, your decision. Do you wanna let somebody use your access drive to get on there? That's your call. That's, you know, uh, and, and if the decision is no, then they'll still have to find another way because I don't know that they can get to that injection well without using the county's access drive there if there is a lock, you know, gate across there. So, uh, I just, like I said, I wanna make sure you guys were aware of that and we're all on the same page with what was going on.
Commissioners, to elaborate more, I was up there Monday, uh, no, I take that back. I was up there Wednesday. I've been going up there frequently just as, as the issue of no trespassing was, you know, sent out. I've been going up there periodically just to see, well, they've been up there trespassing because they removed some of their equipment off of the site through our property and down by the mark, uh, the Kirk Channel Tower and then onto the field where there's another gate. So there's activity up there still, but it's on the blind side of, of our property.
And I also just wanted to let you guys know because the board chose this, a majority at least voted to send those letters. I sent the letters certified mail to Select Water Systems as well as Mr. Ray. Both postcards were returned from the Select Water Systems, uh, corporate address as well as their state of Ohio, registered address for doing business in Ohio. Mr. Ray's just the other day came back to me. It appears he did not claim his certified mail and came back unclaimed, unsent. So the next step is going to be, and I can take the board's input on this as well, um,
regular mail too, right?
In, in a, in a normal legal proceeding, if you send by regular mail, then you're presumed to have also served the service
Right.
as long as it doesn't get returned for a bad address.
That's what I was thinking.
The other option would be if the board wanted to go with having that letter officially served by a sheriff's deputy process server. I don't know if you wanna go that far or not, but I did wanna alert you that, uh, at least as of this point, he has not received or so, or accepted that letter that was sent, served.
I would do regular mail.
Just regular mail.
Okay, we can do that next.
I thought maybe, sometimes we do, same time.
Yeah, usually we do the certified first, yeah.
My question is, do you want me to open the gate for ODNR to inspect the well?
No.
I will make a phone call on them, no.
I've been very clear on that.
I'll make sure that he knows there's gotta be another way around and if he, and he said he knows the property's been up there since seventeen, two thousand seventeen. So he has a blueprint read out of the marked lines. He knows how he could get around to get to-
Well, he can contact someone else for that. Our county, yeah, our county is not responsible for helping anyone to obtain information to help businesses much. We don't do that for anyone.
So if there is, just to make stuff clear, the stance that you guys both just voted on, if this well goes in production, there's a problem. There's a leak or there's something there, a spill. You're not gonna let ODNR or anyone cross our property at that point either.
Do you think that that could happen, Denny?
Very well could happen. Happens with laws all over the state occasionally.
That's exactly why they're on profit.
Especially if they're not monitored by ODNR. ODNR can't come in and make them abide by the standards and monitor and inspect it.
Well, they would-
You could re-risk that.
Right, and they'll, they'll do that. They'll just have to figure out a way to do it. Without using our county staff because we're not allowed to use our county staff for private businesses, yeah, either.
We're tearing up our roots.
Right.
Private root.
All I have. Thank you.
Is that it? I'm just going to my office.
Anything else? Tom, do you have anything?
Uh, yes.
Been a long new day. Hey, good sir. Anywhere, anywhere you want, anywhere you want.
So, big presentation and other information. I did like a timepiece with the coroner's office, so this is the only current document. So it doesn't come down until the nineteenth.
Yeah.
Okay.
Would you give the hot?
Yes. Presentation and additional information. Okay.
Okay.
All right, thank you for the opportunity to come and speak. Uh, Tom Belish, Buckeye Energy Brokers. Uh, what, um, so today we're talking about the electric aggregation program. So that started, uh, in two thousand eight, the ballot question authorizing the board to enter into service agreements for that. So that's really what we've done, uh, since then, is, uh, come before the board, have them authorize each and every agreement. Um, and that was for all twenty-four townships. Uh, now we know not all twenty-four in this group. Uh, Brookfield and, and Liberty are not.
Do you know who they're with?
Uh, Liberty is with NOPEC and Brookfield is with, uh, AET Energy.
Are you local?
Uh, AET Energy's out of Columbus.
Okay, thanks.
So, um, the current program ends, uh, I'm on page three here. The, the current program ends March twenty twenty-five. Uh, and, uh, since Buckeye Energy has, has run the program, we've had, uh, no resident complaints. Really all, we do get a lot of calls, but they're all calls to join the program. Uh, we do have a market price. Now, this is not subsidized. You, you may have been told it was. This is a market price. Anyone can, could have struck when we struck. So we struck four years ago. Three-year price, a year in advance, um, for three years is, is what we did the last time. And, uh, it's market price. Anybody else could, could have done that as well had, had they wanted to. Um, it's just other, other groups did shorter term- It's just other other groups did shorter-term deals and some some groups only do monthly, month, only months in advance. So, um, what we're coming up with next month is the Ohio Edison Auction to set their rate, uh, starting in June. Um, so residents, uh, in the program now will be automatically enrolled unless they opt out. So our agreement, I would anticipate to be, we would recommend something relatively short this time because of the, um, high expected capacity costs, which we'll we'll get to here in a minute. What we have on page four is the Ohio Edison rate. So, uh, for a long time, it was going along very smoothly and and fairly low. It was difficult to beat them, but we had a six percent off of their their rate. So we all, we were always saving because of that rate. Now, in twenty twenty-three, there was a very, very drastic change there. And that that was because in twenty twenty-two, uh, NOPEC's rate was significantly above Ohio Edison. So they moved everybody back to, um, buyers that had won the auction. And, um, that's what, uh, the the auctioneer is saying here. Uh, the the auction number was so high because of what NOPEC had done, which is moved new customers back to back to, uh, Ohio Edison's, uh, winning bidders. So, um, based on that, um, and then next is based on the capacity rates. So June twenty twenty-three, we have June twenty twenty-four, have been fairly low. Now, June twenty twenty-five, rates, the capacity rates are going up significantly. So that's part, that's part of the electric cost. That's part of the hurdle we need to to get by. So you see in this chart, I would just sharp increase that's gonna be. So we have, we have some plans and recommendations on how to deal with that. And, uh, we think it's, uh, you know, kind of a clear path of what what to do. So that would be part of our, uh, if, uh, if our contracts renewed, part of our recommendation would be a plan on how to manage manage that.
I have a question.
Yes, go ahead.
I don't, this is the one area that I'm not the, I can admit I don't really know. What did they, um, what did you say that no, because NOPEC, they, you said that they knew customers back to Ohio Edison winning winning bidder. When was that on on my?
So that was September of twenty twenty-two.
And the impact was?
Um, yeah, there, yeah, we'll get, I'll I'll cover those as well. But, yeah, there was a significant, uh, impact in the hundreds of millions of dollars.
So was increases for our customer?
So their their, uh, uh, their customers, um, were increases, but in the Chumby County, we had a fixed rate, so Chumby County residents were not affected at all.
Because NOPEC does. Okay.
They did a, they did a variable rate and dropped everybody back to the auction. So the ones who bid on the auction weren't bidding on those five hundred thousand customers. They were not expecting them. So the next auction, everybody was very shy to bid.
That's when you had us on a fixed rate?
Yes.
Okay.
Um, so suppliers are now not willing to to bid or not at all or, um, bid very high. And we've also lost a supplier. Uh, we we used to have the pick from Diageo or NG Harbor. Diageo bought NG Harbor. We were down a supplier now, so there's less choice, uh, in the market.
How many suppliers are there?
Uh, there's, there's, there's very few. I mean, you may have been told there's a hundred and forty. There are not.
Because they're like subsidiary areas and.
They may be registered and maybe including brokers or very few will do aggregation. Uh, we're not, uh, when we go out for bid, we'll probably get very few bids, uh, probably a couple.
What is aggregation? Can you explain what aggregation is?
So so joining, um, uh, customers, um, we're we're negotiating price for a group of customers.
I'm sorry. I was hoping our whole board would be listening.
Yeah, yeah. So, so, uh, yeah, we would be, uh, a group of customers banding together and then send out a request for proposal for those customers and that specific load. And then, uh, the the customers ultimately get that price for that term that's negotiated. So in this case, it's twenty-two townships that we're working with.
Um, did I have another question? Because, like, we had, we had presentations from the NOPEC and the, um, the one that's recommended by the County Commissioner Association of Ohio. And they said that they they presented that they are the biggest and the best because of their so many people. For what they better rates than like you or anyone else can. I just wanna find out.
Yeah, certainly. Um, yeah, a price of, uh, uh, it's been, uh, four, four point five three cents. Uh, two years ago, the NOPEC price was twelve cents. So it's really not even been closed. Their price now is six and a half cents. Um, so it's significantly better.
You were locked into that for years.
Right.
Yeah, three years.
But what about that organization that, um, I can't remember their name?
Palmer.
Palmer, got it?
Yeah, so they have, uh.
They have so many customers. But if it's end of the day, like, this is, I I believe, like, based on other industries or broker, they still have same rates. Like, they're not gonna go that much off of what they're allowed permission to do by the vendors. Understand that?
Uh, electric can be very volatile as well as natural gas. So you can get large price swings. So you have to be quick and you have to strike, uh, to get this deal, we had to do it one year in advance. Had we waited at all, the price would have been six cents or more.
I remember. Cause I was mad at you. I was like, who's he coming? Who has to do this right? I I think I remember. Was I?
But if you look at what other communities pay, we say it.
And he was telling, he came in, cause I remember you coming in and I was an advocate of making sure that other people, you know, do what they were doing. And you explained, you gave me information, but I still wasn't sure. But I do remember that because lock us in and then we ended up saving. And everyone in our township or in our county did do.
Except for two.
Yeah, except for the two. There was one up. Okay.
Right, right. So there's, um, a lot of knowledge, uh, that needs to be gathered to do this job. Uh, we were constantly looking at costs, uh, because the electricity's in in different parts, different parts of your bill, some of the costs we know. Some of them we don't. So as we piece it together and formulate pricing, um, I started in this business in nineteen eighty-eight. So I have a good, very good handle on pricing. What's a good price and what's not a good price? And a way to structure a deal too, uh, the variable price, um, that NOPEC does, I would never put. I wouldn't put my house in that. I wouldn't suggest anybody else do that either. They can, uh, yeah, they can go, be changing and go up, so.
Can you tell me about the Palmer thing? Because they're fifty.
Yeah, so, um, yeah, but again, we just look at the price. The last time I was here, I showed that what they struck at was, uh, seven point two cents for Tuscarawas County, um, at the same time, which was last spring. I did, uh, Summit County at, uh, five point seven seven cents. So that's, uh, that's in the packet two. Um, but what pricing they got.
How are you being better? How are you able to get the better rate? Is it the timing, you know?
Uh, timing is is important and just, um, access to different suppliers. NOPEC is with Nextera. That's the only cus, that's the only supplier that I know that they get pricing from.
Because they're not a broker. Cause being a broker gives you the ability, just like insurance or a mortgage lending, that's more my background. When you're with a broker, you know, you're not going to the bank, but they have the ability to work with different folks in order to get the best deal for you.
Right, right. So we, uh, we deal with suppliers who have local generation. So that's where the long-term price comes in. Whereas NOPEC supplier doesn't have the local generation, so they, uh, they don't take any risk. They actually push the risk onto the customer. And, uh, you know, I don't allow that. I've always protected Chumby County. Um, and Chumby County is my biggest customer. So we we spend a lot of time, uh, here and, uh, have it as a top priority.
Are you local?
So I'm, uh, we're we're based in Akron. I I live in Hudson, but I grew up in Canfield. I have a lot of family in, family in Warren. Uh, my brother works in, uh, Holland Township. My dad worked in Lordstown for thirty years. Um, so I have a lot of local connections. Um, so really the next thing is, uh, you know, what's the next step? Uh, what's, uh, what does the need, regardless of of the choice here today? What what does need to happen next? So sometime between October and November, or maybe even first week of December. Um, you know, some sort of agreement needs needs signed for the next next term. Opt-out letters need to go out in January. Um, so we, uh, and page seven here, so the past three years, residents save thirty-two, thirty-two million dollars with this, uh, with this price. And, uh, you know, local, local businesses can still do grant, uh, PACE programs. You can go right on the PACE website and get get PACE loans.
Thirty-two millions off of the base rate if you.
Off of the Ohio way.
Off of the Ohio, okay.
Yes. Um, and then since we started with the county, we brought in, uh, over, uh, two point one million dollars in grant money. What, uh, um, you know, Buckeye Energy was was the first, we were the first company to implement electric aggregation. And, uh, we kind of figured it out. We had, uh, uh, we've worked in local utility. We've worked for suppliers. I worked for First Any Solution. Um, and then started a broker. So we have, uh, kind of a viewpoint of how how all pieces work together. And, um, knowing a lot of the the information and how the how the industry works is how we're able to get the best pricing for our customers. Uh, page ten, we have, uh, other groups that we work with around the state. You see, they're really, uh, really spread out. It's not like we're just, um, working with local people or anything. We're we're hired in all four corners of the of the state by different cities.
So we only have three counties?
That's right. That's right. So, um, Fayette County, we we work with, uh, Washington too, Washington County too, for their county buildings. Um, Summit County, yeah. So, um, you know, I wish we we could sign up, sign up more, so we're certainly not always looking to do that.
But like, I think that working with that with you.
Yeah, absolutely. So we're not, uh, overextended in any way. Um, so we we work with Washington County. So I know kind of what's going on there. Um, the CCO does, does, Palmer Energy does administer that. So they send letters out. They only send them out to, uh, Columbia Gas customers, but most of that county is actually Dominion. A lot, a lot of.
So they're they're only.
So it it took them eighteen months to figure out that most of Washington County is Dominion, actually, not Columbia Gas. Um, but that's in in the record there. So we, uh, you know, we know the local utilities and, uh, is actually illuminating company customers here and and kind of very few, but we did include them. We include them in the program.
You know the landscape.
Yeah, absolutely. So, you know, since I worked for Ohio Edison for centuries, twelve years, so I'm very familiar with their, um, their, uh, system.
I'm sorry, I tried to attract you.
Yeah, so some of the other information here, uh, about, again, about what happened in, um, twenty twenty-two, uh, going on a variable price, which I would I would never recommend. Um, anyways, uh, pushing those customers back cost the suppliers a hundred and seventy-three million dollars in losses because they had to serve those customers at a rate that was below market price. Market was much higher. They had to buy power and sell at a cheap rate, uh, because of that. So there was also damage to customers as well. A hundred, a hundred and fifty-one million dollars was was paid over and above Ohio Edison's rates. Um, this is according to NOPEC's presentation. Uh, and I have the Summit County rate, five point seven seven, uh, when a lot of other counties and cities are seven point two or or that that range. So we're, but work with, uh, an alternate supplier to that. And, uh, we have some NOPEC financials. Uh, you know, their, um, annual report always says unaudited. Um, I think they pride themselves on their audits, but their annual reports all have unaudited, uh, information. Of course, they found, they found some issues here with that and, uh, one, one year they don't claim that their money is grant and then the next year they, uh, they do claim that the money received was grant. Uh, so I'm not sure what's going on there. A bit of information here about Aaron Toby, um, he's, it apparently does have no utility experience and he is a art history major. Um, you know, we have, uh. Yeah, nothing against art history, but I don't know how that would help you with an electric aggregation program. So he also mentioned putting their name on stadium. And so I have two pictures of two stadiums that they have their names. Um, and then the CCO program, it is, it is non-competitive. They will, they will not send out an RFP for the broker. They've never let me do a presentation or send any information. All they got back was a letter saying, uh, they have a non-compete policy. So in the, in the CCO program, they have, uh, they have power of attorney. The Board of Commissioners would sign over power of attorney. So that's, they're just trying to go around the board. They're trying to do things.
That's terrible. I would, I'd be like us saying, okay, we're just gonna let, not that Ray wouldn't do a good job, but I don't know.
Uh, something I I've never asked for. I don't see the need for it. We're just trying to go around the board and and sign documents. Uh, another thing they have is, uh, they want the Board of Commissioners to pay their legal fees. So that's in their agreement.
So they don't have to be as meticulous about what they do because.
Um, and then they, so they want a five-year term and then five-year renewal. The five-year term would go past the term of the new commissioner, uh, coming in, uh, whoever that is. So, um, and then the end of the, end of their term is not based on the customer, customer agreement. It's the agreement with the customer. Like Buckeye, Buckeye is always, our term is over with the customer's term. They have it as January first and you have to notify them by February first. So eleven months in advance, you would have to notify them. And then it's on the, on the calendar month and not the, uh, power flow. So that's so confusing how that would work. Um, just wanted to point out some things, uh, about that. Uh, you know, we're, have very easy, uh, straightforward agreements with with the county. Um, we'd like to continue working if we could, work with the county and, uh, be happy to answer any questions we have.
For just full disclosure, Tom, have you donated to any commissioners' campaigns?
Yeah.
Which ones?
Uh, Commissioner Cancelmane and, uh, Commissioner French.
So you have donated their campaigns?
Yeah, I, yeah, Buckeye Energy donated to a lot of campaigns, uh, any. Yeah, I, yeah, Buckeye Energy donated to a lot of campaigns, uh, many, many, many throughout the state. So, um, yeah, we've, uh, you know, really appreciated the opportunity to be here and, and work. And we've, uh, we hope you see the value that we're bringing. Residents are, are really looking at price. I know you can throw a lot of other bells and whistles into a program, like the, certainly the residents are for the best price. So if they don't get it, they, they're really just opt-outs. Any grant money will be tied to maybe customers, number of customers. But a lot of them opt-out, you're really lowering the amount of grant money made.
Yeah, and I don't think that that makes any difference. Because when I first came here, this, this is the way it works. When you're newly like, did you look and see who they need to do and then you ask them also? I was, I was skeptical because I didn't understand any of it. He explained the process completely and, and, um, I wanted to see more local brokers. Because I thought maybe that there are more local brokers. But I never at one time wanted to go with someone who was outside of our area that doesn't know, doesn't know what's going on here. And when I found out that so many of our trustees and our townships were, were, because I act around. You know, I did a lot of due diligence and, um, and I understand that, uh, the variable rates and things like that. It got just from, from my background in real estate and mortgages. And when I saw the outcome, I, I thought, I, I was satisfied with what was going on and the fact that we were paid money. So I, I, with the news coming from the board, I think a lot of people were just kind of like cultures on like, hey, business. And, um, I, I personally have been more than satisfied with, with what you've been, and the accessibility. Literally, when we have people with questions, they, I've experienced that, have, I don't.
Same for me, yeah, Tom has been very responsive.
Um, yeah, I think the others are interested not to come in and give you the best price. I think they've admitted, they want to give you the price that everybody else is getting. It may not be the best, but they want to, uh, give the, give, give you the price that everybody else is paying in, in northeast Ohio. Which, uh, you certainly don't have to, don't have to accept that.
And the last time when we, um, approved the four, what was it, four point six or eight? Four point five three. You can see what those other communities were paying over that period of time. And we locked in very early and that was because of you. We saved people literally thousands and thousands of dollars.
I really, I weren't there yet, but I was. Yeah, that's, I think that's the kind of attempt to tell that we will get by having someone that doesn't, that's not over resident and is local or to our community. You know, because you're not just looking out for Chumby County, you're looking out for the bills of your family members and then people that will live here, you know? That's, I think, I think he does a good job. Personally, I just wanted to, for the record, that I would, I would prefer to renew his three months.
Yeah, I'm gonna take it all into consideration, but, um?
So far, I mean, compared to the other, the other ones we've had, if someone else talks in, then. I don't know that there would be anyone, but based on the three we've, we've heard, it's only been paid, right?
Yes.
Okay. So we have to make a decision soon though, because we have to send those letters out and we need to make sure that, we don't want to screw over our constituents because it's up in the air. I want to make sure everyone has an opportunity to, um, sign up or opt-out or whatever the proper term is.
Do we have others coming to make a pitch as well or is it?
None that I know of that have reached out to us yet. These are the three that kind of reached out.
Well, if we reach out to three, we should reach out to all of them.
Well, that's what I, that's what I said when I first.
That's right, we're open, they, they've reached out to us. We didn't, we didn't go recruit anyone to come to us, they reached out there.
Request for, uh, qualifications.
Yeah.
And, and you can have more people come. So that's what I originally wanted to do when I came here. Um, and that's why I was a little skeptical. But then I was talking to other people or other, you know, trustees and some of them explained better to me what was going on. And you ended up getting, I think, some that weren't with you before too.
Other township, yeah, yeah, Mississauga, Champion, Weathersfield.
Right, you guys knew them too.
Um, yeah, we recruited, we've also included City of Niles in the gas program, um, Lordstown in the gas program. Um, so we have, as, um, as their, either other brokers or suppliers kind of went away, we, we've recruited these other areas as well.
And this is something we need to really put some work into.
It's really quickly.
I understand that, but I've received calls this week from people that were with NOPEC saying, these guys have been great to us. I got calls from other counties saying, CCAO has been great with us, you have a big say in what goes on as county commissioner. Uh, I've had people, uh, vouch also for Buckeye, same thing. They're happy with the service, so we need to look at the three. And what generated this was the renewal period came up and we had to make a decision, they were opt-out or we were gonna be locked into a penalty. So we chose the opt-out route while we shopped around. And to shop around, we need to do our due diligence. Um, and that's something where now we've heard from all three, we can go and compare what they gave us, compare the packets. I would encourage all three board members to call some of the competitors' customers and ask what they're, what they like, their dislikes and do our due diligence.
You have to say.
I don't like the fact, just being honest, you know, they, First Energy donated to Larry Householder, you know, look what they got. Uh, you donate it to county commissioners and they turn around and vote for you to give you a paycheck.
Should we see your donations?
You could, you could.
And let's talk about those.
I'm just saying, this full disclosure is that.
I know.
It's, it's available for the public to see. I'm just saying, it's just, energy providers, I don't think should be.
It has nothing to do with it.
Absolutely ridiculous.
Has nothing to do with it.
I mean, I'm not even on the ballot and, and I wouldn't.
You were on the ballot and you got a donation, that's so it, it did mean something.
Okay, but I'm not on, I'm not on the ballot now and I, I just genuinely know that if you're gonna ask even customers in other communities, they're not gonna be able to compare what we've got here. And we've got something very good here. And if they knew what he was able to do for them, I, it's not even about.
It's not even comparable.
It's not comparable. Like, the, the, the numbers.
You talk to trustees and Liberty, they love what they got. They love the grant money they've gotten from NOPEC, they love the service they've gotten. I talked to more than one, um, Liberty person that said, NOPEC's been great to us. So I'm just saying. I'm not lobbying for one way or another, I'm just saying there are people that have opinions.
The dollar amounts, the, the, these dollar amounts don't lie. And I think we need to look at accessibility and dollar amounts because this isn't about us picking someone who, uh, who we like better personally or we're friends with or we're donating to, it's about us making sure that we're getting, getting someone.
I like the, I like the grant money coming back. I'd like to see how much grant money actually came back from all three groups, the different things, to see how much money they're giving back, grant-wise.
But don't, don't be fooled by the grant money when you're getting a lower rate.
Right.
I mean, that's what, this is, this is exactly where the rubber meets the road. We'll keep our faith, you know?
That's really the advantage of working with us, is it's not a predetermined grant program. This was put in the agreement, so page seven I'm referring to, that this was put in the agreement at the time. If, if the, uh, if the commissioners wanted to change this, you can. You have, you have flexibility on this, absolutely. So it's not a predetermined number like the other, like the other two players, I believe. So if this wanted to be different, you can make it different. We have communities that don't want it and, and we have communities that change it and make it different. So you have the ability to, to do that with us.
Thank you. Bill?
I have another issue to bring up, you guys, the commissioners, I'm sorry. Uh, Bill or Chumby County Manions, they are starting the actual office of the highway engineers tomorrow. So the upgrading that took three and a half years to get started is getting started tomorrow. Electric TT PK units for the offices, uh, and electricity. So everything's coming together for the Board of Highway Engineers offices to get started tomorrow. Breaking ground on all that tomorrow.
Okay. Anything else?
Good note.
Um, I'm gonna try and schedule for next week for, because of the, what you said with the elevator and stuff, do some form of, uh?
Oh, okay.
Dedication of the cafeteria food area or whatever, see if that works for AVI and Gasser. So I'll look for next Tuesday or Wednesday.
Next week now?
Afternoon, yeah.
Okay, that's.
Not this week.
Yeah, follow. You're done, I'll just ask you.
Uh, Commissioners Alex, you and John Seabush, I just wanted to let you guys know, obviously she left, but I wanted to let you two know, um, since she did ask last week, how do we know that there wasn't anybody pertaining to the workman's comp attorney? I want to let you know that I have a writing from our government's ultimate attorney, they don't handle workman's comp cases. I knew all that going into this, I just wanted to make sure you guys knew. I mean, obviously that would have been something that is my job to look at beforehand, which I did.
Sure.
But should, I just felt like it was important for you guys to know that.
Sure.
Anything else? Motion adjourned.
Second.
Your Councilor Mesa?
Yes.
Your Malloy?
Yes.
This Frenchco?